All right, tonight is Thursday, February 2nd. It is 4:00 PM. This is an emergency meeting. The Kuschna Board of Supervisors has motioned to call the meeting to order.
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and the great living and just as.
All right, thank you, all of you who are attendants. This isn't a meeting that we like to have or want to have, but we've got an issue in town with one of the solar arrays located at 550 Main Street. And it seems to be a, you know, a problem project and property. It was brought to our attention in early December, or early December, mid-December, some of the water runoff issues. Selecting Hinckley was on the case. We had a resident who was a short well and couldn't get water. So the town took decisive action and decided to hook that person up to town water in an emergency situation. And it appears that there has been a great deal of malfeasance or malpractice with that property with respects to erosion control in water runoff mitigation. And with the heavy rains that we've had and with the oncoming cold snap that we anticipate and potential rain, it was brought to the board's attention that that could be a trouble spot. And we want to make sure that we can get ahead of it. We've got an all-hands-on-deck approach with our public safety because it is pretty serious. If that is a berm there, if that were to breach, it would cause serious damage to the neighborhood, to the butters, and to Main Street. As you know, there's a brook stream that runs under Main Street. And I think what's probably most egregious is the fact that 19 acres of forestry was cut down, which is not the scope of this project. And again, causing a serious issue not only now, but potentially. So we want to make sure that we've got all parties on the case. Again, we don't want to be alarmists, but we want to make sure that we are properly prepared because the ramifications potentially are serious. And we want to make sure that, again, like I said, that we've got all of our public safety units and those who would be interested or would be involved on the case in the event the worst happens and with some type of flooding or landslide issue on that property. Gentlemen, I know Mr. Hinckley, you're involved, you've been involved in this from the jump.
Yep. I think you've covered the bases pretty well on that. I'd gone out with Pat and Joe, Dave Dominion, to take a look. And, you know, my biggest concern was I don't think any family should be without water for more than, the shortest amount of time possible. There was no reason for them to have to wait as long as they did. We did everything we could to get them going. And I think Pat and Joe jumped right on it, which was awesome. We rectified that situation, but, you know, it keeps getting to the point where we keep hearing the same address over and over again. And I think the other day when I drove by Main Street and there was water, almost like you said, there's a brook running underneath Main Street, there's a brook running over Main Street. And it needs to be addressed.
Mr. Gasper?
I think we have a presentation from...
Mr. Hannan was, has been a stormwater agent and our Joe Carrera, our sanitarian, has been on the issue. So Pat, I don't know if you want to share with the board your findings and some of the corrective actions that you've looked to try and put into place?
Yes. Let me do this right. So these are just pictures from today. I want to show you another picture. So while I'm doing this, EPA actually came to the site today and did an unannounced stormwater inspection. And, you know, definitely found some issues there. And we're expecting a report from them after this. We see Nick. I need Nick to come off this. Here he is. Come here, you gotta tell me twice. So Selecting Hinckley and Joe and myself have been in very close contact with the Walshes that live at 582 Main Street. And this is a picture of their pond full of silt and full of water from the solar field project that discharged because they just weren't set up to do this yet. This has also gone next door to the Maderos property and has filled her pond with silt. This is the drain that goes out to the road and goes under Main Street. And you can see the water flowing down. The water came so heavy over their backyard and I can't give you the sound, but it sounds like a waterfall coming through the Walshes' backyard. And it's coming over the ground, under the ground, through a pipe that's coming from everywhere. And this goes to the Kuschna River. And I don't know how much EPA spent to clean up the Kuschna River recently, but, you know, this is the type of thing that needs to be prevented. So this is where it comes behind Rochelle's. And it actually flooded the parking lot behind Rochelle's. You can see the parking lot in the background there. And Joe and I went over to Rochelle's, but the water's brown, it's full of silt. Mr. Chairman, you read the email from Navasun denying that they did this and that they researched this. If you look at the upwards, you see all the impacts on the grass. That's how far, how high this pond got on the discharge on the 26th. There's the flow coming out of the pipe into the Walshes' backyard. This pipe's been there historically, but never carries that much stormwater. The stormwater's full of silt. And there's a close-up of the pipe. You know, this is what's going into our wetlands and into the Kuschna River. And that's the flow. And that's just out of the pipe. That's not what's coming also over the ground. This is part of the backside. This is coming through his backyard from the basin that we're concerned about, not just through the pipe. That's how much is coming over the ground. This is on the way out towards the Blue Lantern, heading out to Main Street. That's heading out to the river. This is coming through the Walshes' backyard again, more through the Walshes' backyard. It almost got halfway to their house this time. And the phone calls from the Walshes at this point, they don't feel safe in their home property because of, you know, what's going on over there. Every time it rains, they're out in the woods at 12 and 1 o'clock in the morning with a video camera, trying to make sure that nothing happens over there. I've taken their phone calls at 1:00 in the morning. After they were ordered not to discharge any water, this is how much water was coming over the berm and onto the Walshes' property. They couldn't, they couldn't control the water there. When Joe was there with me, we were taking pictures of that water, you know, heading through here. And you can see how full that basin is. It's like within a foot of the top. I was told by Bates and Sons, the contractor, that this basin was designed to hold a three-inch rainstorm. And right now, this basin's holding an eight-and-a-half-inch rainstorm. And when I got the plans for the basin, I questioned whether or not that basin was properly constructed. Looking at what the plans called for, I'm looking at the materials I'd seen on the job. I didn't think it was done, so I asked Navasun if they did any progress inspections while the basin was being built and were there compaction tests. I never got any inspection results for the berm. I'm very concerned about that. And I did hear from Bates that they, after the fact, did some compaction tests and they didn't come out too bad. So they didn't achieve the 95%. It didn't, it wasn't constructed to what it was designed to do. If you look closely, this is the top of the emergency spillway. And you can see a little bit of brown water going through the emergency spillway. They could have pumped this water into tankers and taken this tanker off the property as soon as they knew they had a problem, but they've been trying to... My, I say they're throwing darts, that they really don't have a plan and that they're just, you know, fumbling through the site. This was a picture I took to show that the dirt next to the emergency spillway is eroding and washing away. And there's what went over the emergency spillway into the backyards of the people at Scott's Way. And on the second and third releases after being told not to release any water from the site, not only did it go down Scott's Way, but it went into the backyards of the houses facing Scott's Way from the project and has silted up the backyard of one of those houses beyond belief. Their car tires were underwater in their driveway. And unfortunately, this water went into our MS4 system. This, this did go to Main Street and did go into our storm drains. There's a better picture of, you know, where this water's going. They tried pumping the water up to the top of the site to let it run back down. And unfortunately, all that did was recharge so much water into the site now that it's, it's mounding water and water's coming out of the ground further and further from the property, trying to find a way to get out. And if you drive in the entrance to 550 Main Street now, where you get into the project, everything is wet and puddling. And that's, that's water that was never there before. There are some... Here's the people on the other side of Scott's Way. And I think you can see the water in front of their cars and you can see that it's brown. That's still, you know, still there today. And here's water coming down Main Street, headed for the catch basins. And this is where it came out on the other side of the Blue Lantern. We went to the Blue Lantern to see it. I couldn't find a spot that I could access the stream that goes out to the Kuschna River, but in their, in their NIPs plan, they identified that the downstream receipt within one mile of this project is the Kuschna River. And this is the little bit I could get behind the Blue Lantern before it just gets too thick to see what's going on. So this is, this is a, and this is Rochelle's parking lot. This is a major issue. I've got nothing but emails from the project saying that I'm wrong. And, you know, they've inspected it. In the beginning, they said complete denial. We didn't do it. It's not us. EPA came out today. I called EPA and asked them to come out. I asked them to make this an example so that the next five solar jobs that start here in town, everybody's fair-warned and forewarned. And a fellow from EPA today said he's willing to come back anytime you call him now. He's definitely interested in this stuff. We went to a second project today. They looked at, there'll be some, some issues over there, not a solar field. And EPA is going to look and see if Navasun has any other projects in Massachusetts because they want to inspect them. And Navasun, EPA feels that there's some contractor, you know, responsibility here that maybe the contractor hasn't done this according to the plans. But I actually think that Navasun's inspections lacked giving any direction to the contractor and the contractor just made it happen. And that's it.
Couple, thank you. So we met the other day, so Wednesday?
Yes.
No, we met Tuesday. And you, you did indicate that you asked, where you required the vendor, the Navasun to take some corrective action. And I think that's really important. I want Gary Hathaway, who owns Scuttle Butts and that property, I just want to make sure...
So I sent them an enforcement order from the Conservation Commission, ordering them to cease any discharge of water from the site, to file a corrective action design to correct this problem and to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission after the fact. And they refused. They came to the meeting and said, no, we're not doing it. So my, my only alternative was to call EPA and let the federal government take care of it.
Have they done anything, though, in the short term, in the immediate, to try and get the water off the property or what's the...
So they have brought in some, they're called frac tanks. And they're, one of their plans was to fill the frac tanks and then take the water off in tankers or something to a sewer treatment plant. But the sewer treatment plant can't take water that dirty either. So all of that silt needs to be settled out. I don't know if the frac tanks will actually do that. But they've submitted now an application for a notice of intent and they've submitted a corrective action plan. But all that plan really entails is, you know, adding three, four, five more ponds to the property that have to hold water. And now they want to actually discharge water from the site through some type of a filter process that is clean. I'm concerned that there's, and I'm only guessing, but let's just say there's 350,000 gallons of water there. You can't discharge as much water will come out of a six-inch pump to the ground and not flood everybody's backyards again. It would have to be the amount of rainwater, like a, like a normal rainstorm. And that's all they could pump off. And, and because everything's saturated, discharging the groundwater is not going to work. When EPA was there today, they looked at one of their pipes that they put in, in the ground, and groundwater is already six inches from the top. It's not going to take anymore. The water needs to leave the site. And we can't tell them what to do because if they do it and it doesn't work, they'll say, you told us to do it. And that's why I sent them an email that said, you have a construction general firm with EPA. Take action under your permit that allows for maintenance and corrective action. Do what the federal government allows you to do. And the federal government wasn't happy with what they saw today.
Okay. Couple things. One is the concern about the tree cutting that took place above and beyond what was the original scope of the project.
So there's a lot of confusion in the plans. The first plans that were approved by the planning board were for two megawatts. And then there was a change in that, that the power company kicked it back to one megawatt. And there were some questions on whether or not that was going to require a new hearing with the planning board or was it a major change? And our past commissioner of building departments said, you know, it wasn't a major change. But in their communications, they indicated it would be a smaller field and less tree cutting. But if you go and look at it, it's been cleared for the two-megawatt job. The plans that we've all seen in our past meetings said 1.49 megawatts, but now they say 1.79 megawatts on these recent plans just submitted. So it's on its way back up. It's different than what the planning board had. And it's the fourth rendition of plans for that project. And we have a problem with things getting approved at one board and then a different set of plans being sent to the other without them knowing that they've been changed.
Mr. Bobola, new set of eyes on this project. Do you issue a letter, right? It's in our package, gentlemen?
Yes, I did. It was a cease and desist order for this project. With following up with Mr. Hannan, I have some pretty serious concerns relating to the surrounding properties and also the infrastructure of Main Street. If we get the wrong combination of rain and the wrong quantities of rain with that site in its present condition, we have a chance of losing that portion of Main Street. Okay? The water is running under, it's running around, it's running over. And if we back it up with a severe storm, we're in trouble. Earlier in the week, when they forecasted this deep freeze that's coming for 36 hours, there was rain forecasted for Sunday. And that would have been, you know, that would have been it. Because when that ground froze and we get rain on Sunday and it just, it has nowhere to go, it just floods everyone downstream to the sides. The West Gates never had these kind of problems prior to this. In my opinion, being in the trade for over 45 years, this site never should have been cleared at this time of the year. Okay? It should have been started late spring or late summer. And instead, we're down to barren soil. The water has no place to go. We have a retention pond, and Pat, you'll probably back me up on this. It's in the middle of a hydraulic link joining two properties and it's built below the water tip. Okay? Or into the water tip. It's just, there's so many things that are not correct. It's, it's hypothetical. Okay? And this is what we're left with as a community. That's what's frustrating. And, you know, to have a neighbor lose their well and for the town to have to step in and tighten them into town water. I mean, these aren't things that, I'm sorry, that someone that really cares about a community does. These are fast-acting, okay, with a little bit of thought to it, that just never should have started in the timeframe it started with. And collectively from... There should have been a lot more collective eyes, there should have been more eyes on this project and all like this. I will tell you that also a follow-up on another solar company that did not have reviews from the applicable departments that I feel should have. I've issued denied permits for the three. Okay? We have got to, as a community, get a grip on this, you know, so that these kinds of things don't happen. And that's just my take on it, sir.
All right, I think you're, I mean, you're 100% correct. I mean, look, when we first looked at solar as an opportunity for the town, the first project in town was Katuut Solar off of Main Street. That was the gold standard. I mean, they were, they'd been great partners with the town. And, you know, in a gap of, in a moment of time, people swooped in fast and loose. That's why this board put a moratorium in place and looked to rewrite the bylaw to make it much more stringent and much more difficult to get a permit. Because it's, there was a small, you know, small loophole that solar developers have driven a, you know, a Mack truck through, unfortunately. So we're going to make sure that we get it right. There's some things that we're looking at to try and make sure that there's better cohesion and coordination amongst the departments. Hopefully, we'll have software in place that, you know, makes sure that if one permit is issued, the next department down the line, people have those checks and balances. And hopefully, we'll also have some type of general oversight of those departments for greater cohesion. It's a, it's a, it doesn't make it right to say that we're going to try to do better because some people are dealing with the fallout of that. But at this point, we want to make sure that there's a learning moment here that we can fix moving forward to make sure that this, this kind of stuff doesn't happen again. It's really unfair to the... It's just a general feeling, I think, we have about what's going on in town in general, right? I mean, we've been, we've been on the property on South Main Street. You drive around and it just appears to be just a general disregard for people's neighbors, people's property, or, you know, there's tires and trash and it's just, I don't know where it's, I don't know if it's because of COVID or what, but just, it just feels like the town needs a general clean sweep to clean things up here. And, you know, hoping that people look at their neighbors and say, hey, you know what? I don't want that for my neighbor and I don't want that for myself. So, you know, this is, this is a project that's endemic of that, so.
Just to build on the, so there were time of year restrictions on this project.
Right.
And, and even their own engineer put in a work plan and a schedule to start this job in May, not to start it on December 1st. And Navasun got up and said, you know, we're trying to figure out how this happened. It happened because you didn't listen to your engineer.
Right.
And it happened because you also let your contractor install discharge pipes to a basin that was never supposed to discharge until the project was done. And they failed to inspect it and they failed to catch that error by the contractor.
Right.
And that's how the first discharge happened.
And, you know, this, I think there's a general feeling of, you know, ask for forgiveness, right?
It's cheaper than...
Let's just do it and then we'll deal with the fallout. And maybe it's a fine and maybe it's a slap on the wrist, but in the end result, we get what we want. And we just can't have that, can't have that. Okay. Gentlemen, we've got, I'd say we've got a plan in place. We do have it on the agenda to possibly contact the AG. That might be premature. We've got EPA looking at this stuff, but I do think to have a motion to have a town administrator prepare a packet with information that, you know, that we could provide to the AG if possible, because I'm hoping that we don't want to see this in our town and we don't want to see it happen in other communities either.
So EPA has asked for additional information that I'm going to be assembling for them. He can come and look at it, but he needs to see the actual video of the, of the discharges. So I'll be putting that together and I can make sure that, you know, JB gets all of that stuff.
Joe? Yeah, I mean, from a health standpoint, you know, we kind of had to get in the way of this at the very beginning in order to get something to happen. Ultimately, they complied with our order. The Board of Health did lift the order because they did maintain their stormwater on-site. But that's not a viable solution, as we're all finding out, because it's, it's almost impossible to do it or unless they're trucking it out. But we stand ready to take any more actions that we need to do in the event that something goes down here. We're watching it closely all the time. I'm constantly interacting with the conservation agent, stormwater agent, you know, with our building commissioner to make sure that I know, the Board of Health knows where we're at with this. I go on inspections regularly with Mr. Hannan and/or anybody else that wants to go, just so I make sure that I stay on top of it.
And I, I was with Mr. Hannan today with the Andrew, the EPA official that was there, being the Soil Board Chairman. I felt privy to go in for that inspection with Mr. Hannan and I couldn't actually believe what I seen at this site. Andrew, I think, said, our Andrew, the building commissioner, said, you know, things have slipped through the cracks in the past. I have no idea how something to this magnitude could ever slip through the cracks. This is, this is some serious, in my opinion, negligence on people, our tax payers pay their salaries and this kind of stuff has happened. So that's where really I hold the accountability for is we got a process in place, the bylaws dictate that this review by different boards and committees and individuals that are responsible for this sign-off. Mr. Bobola talked about the digital, you brought up the digital thing. We know that that digital permitting process has been modified. Modules have been turned off, is what I understand. It all comes down to, basically, to me, the cheapest way out is a piece of paper. And I've said it to Mr. Kelly, Mr. Hannan in different meetings, Mr. Bobola was actually in that meeting, it's the first meeting I met him, is if you're going to do digital, then just do a sheet of paper and run parallel. They both have to be the same thing. Everybody's got to sign off. The same set of plans needs to go through. And the building commissioner, that comment was made, I believe, by Mr. Hannan or Mr. Bobola just now, said something about, in our bylaws, it says the building inspector can make minor changes. Who on God's green earth thinks a two-megawatt planned to a one-megawatt and then going from a one-megawatt to a two-megawatt is a minor change? And to allow a permit to be issued in that nature and not get kicked back to planning board, conservation, our Soil Board is now responsible. Correct, Mr. Hannan?
Correct.
I mean, you're missing out on the permitting fees and the things that they'll like. The Conservation Commission, they really need to get their act together, do their job when they're looking at these plans with Land Protection Act. They have to start doing enforcement. I think we've been lazy on that situation. There's a lot of things that need corrections and I think it's all simple things that can turn this whole ship around and get the town in the right direction. You know, I'm not wanting to say, hey, we need to spend $100,000 to do X, Y, and Z. We're paying a lot of money. We're paying a lot of money to a lot of people in salaries. What they need to be is held accountable for it. And I think that's what this comes down to is basically what I'm saying is there's some gross negligence on certain people's behalf. And they should be ashamed of themselves for acting that way when they get paid by our taxpayers. So, you know, I, I'm appalled. And I know that we don't allow wet basins. I believe the drainage spec on our basin that's being designed, we have a stormwater bylaw. I have no idea how they circumvented that because I could tell you right now, from my perspective, and I'm not an engineer, but I can look at that field and say, are you in me? That you think that little basin's going to hold all the runoff from this field? Seventeen, what is it, sixteen, nineteen acres of land? Nineteen acres of land? And they got this little teeny tiny pond, you know, it might be twice the size of this room that's two feet deep. I mean, give me a break. That water's standing water, it's supposed to drain in seventy-two hours?
Correct.
It's supposed to be, I think it's a hundred-year stormwater?
Hundred-year storm, well, there's a bunch of different, designed to...
Okay, so, I mean, let's, we're talking sixty days of frigging stormwater, okay? And the basin's chock full and it ain't draining. How is that a hundred-year stormwater plan? So I don't understand why a permit would have ever been issued if this process would have had that little stupid piece of paper that didn't cost a penny with a checklist. Mr. Bobola and I had this conversation, he's putting one together now so it can't be circumvented, the process, but give me a break. This should have never occurred. There's a lot of things in development that should never occur. And to be fair to developers, we need to have somebody, planning board, conservation, whoever it may be, the checklist should just be there. And we, maybe we put one together with all the bylaws and everything. When somebody comes in and say, hey, I'm going to develop this piece of property, you just go, okay, here you go. This is all the things that you need to have for your checklist. Soil Board, Conservation, Board of Health, if it involves them, reception systems, planning, Building Department, DPW, Bing Bing Fire Chief, Police Chief, and everybody's going to sign off. And if it's not applicable, not applicable, sign your name to it. So if there's ever a problem where somebody signed off and said not applicable and it falls on them, we can hold that person accountable. That's really what this comes down to. It's, it's beyond my belief how this solar field ever ended up there and it was approved. And, and from the meanings that I get is nobody can even find the original plan that was put in front. Somebody did this plan, somebody did that plan, somebody's got this plan. And it's like, you can't change plans. A developer can't change plans on the fly. You just keep going back to the building inspector and say, here, I only made minor changes and nobody's reviewing it. Everybody's going to go right back through the whole chain of command all over again. And no set of plans come in, I don't care what it is, everybody should be reviewing that plan. It's pretty simple. And the lower corner of a plan, it says revisions. And it tells you what the revisions were. And then you look for the revisions and you say, okay, that doesn't pertain to me. Again, the same piece of paper comes out, follows suit, the original one stays, document stays, and everybody keeps following suit. So there's always a paper trail of what the hell's going on.
Mr. Gaspard, we have it, it's on the agenda for a vote may be taken. I think in alignment with what you're suggesting, I think under the powers and authority that we have under our town charter and town bylaw, the Board of Selectmen can initiate an investigation, call it an investigation, call it an inquiry, call it a review of 550 Main Street Solar Array. We need a forensic audit of what went on with this, with this project from the beginning to the end. And, you know, what shakes out, shakes out, but to make sure that this does not happen again.
I don't agree more.
Before we do that...
I'll make that motion.
Is there a motion to direct Mr. Kelly to oversee an investigation of 550 Main Street Solar Array with Navasun as the proponent?
Yes.
All those in favor?
There's somebody with you.
Can I speak, sir?
Yeah.
My name's Steve Campbell, Chief Operations Officer at Navasun. We're listening in the back. I'm here with a couple of members of our team. I agree, this is beyond where it should have gone and we're trying our best to keep up here. We're doing our own internal investigation, how things happen on our side to get where we are. We are here hat in hand to say, we're willing to work with the town on all of this. We're trying to make it right. One reason why the water is out there is because all the cease and desists don't discharge any water. So we try not to discharge any water. We had four inches on Thursday night and we lost control of the site. We did. We're working hard on our side to make sure that nothing happens again until we get approval to do it. Trucks are rolling now. We are sucking out water offsite, started today. And we're running at least two or three trucks a day until we remove all, all the water off that site. We're also looking at interim measures that we're going to try to put in, in action to alleviate some of the problems that we're seeing with the basins as structured. The original basin was there, I agree. We did not have protocols in place and we missed that. We've tried to catch up. It was a four, you know, fourteen-day period where the ranges kept happening and we couldn't get on top of it. Not an excuse. We shouldn't have lost this site, I agree. That's our responsibility. And we are willing to work with the town on this, on our side of how we end up where we are. We purchased this project from another developer. Mr. Hannan has made that clear a couple of times, that this has changed hands three times. We ultimately were the one that bought it and built it. We are trying really hard to keep up on this and I want the town to know that. That's why we filed with CONCOM, we're trying to make it work. We had a discussion today that ultimately we're revising the plan for the long term once we get to the end, what it looks like. But we're, we're looking now, we're all worried about what's going to happen if it freezes right now too. So we're looking at all kinds of things. We're, we're going to start rolling trucks, we're going to get everything out of there. The frac tanks are out there to use as an emergency outlet that if we start seeing rain and if it starts getting really, really close, we have about an initial one-hundred-twenty-five thousand gallons of water that we can put there. And then we're going to truck it offsite. We have contracts now to get it all trucked offsite. So I want this board to know and I want every member here to know that we're taking this extremely seriously. And we're trying to work with the town. And there was a little bit of who's, who's leading the discussions with us. We've ended up at CONCOM, we're trying to submit everything across the board. And we're willing to... Mr. Hannan said, you know, you guys aren't supposed to tell us what to do, that's fine. All we're asking for is just some feedback on, from a review engineer, someone who can help us work through, our engineers are working on this. And we just want to make sure that the town is getting what the town needs out of this before we put any water offsite.
So you mentioned your engineer. Have you gone through stormwater review first before you start meddling with the project? Because I would think stormwater would be first, right? Build basin first for stormwater? So if your engineer designed that detention basin, it's garbage. And I don't know who that engineer is, but you should fire him. Because there's no way in hell, any engineer can tell me that that small basin can handle nineteen acres of runoff into that little basin. I understand we've been in a drought for several years. Things have changed. We just witnessed it for the last couple of months. And I don't even consider eight inches of rain, I think that's what Mr. Hannan said. Eight inches of rain is not that much rain, all things being considered. And we have that mess out there. So whoever's the engineer, I would believe that you need several pond detention basins there. And if you need to shrink your 1.79, if that's the final number on your panels, and you end up with one because you have too many ponds to catch all that water, so be it, if that's what it is, that's what it is. You're going to take that hit. You're going to swallow that pill and like it. Because I tell you right now, we can't afford to have a re-engineered plan and then get a tremendous amount of rainfall again and have our poor folks, residents that surround that property trapped again. Just has to, has to be done and done right. And I think that's what we're all working towards, the new goal. We get some new people in place. And if we have to flush the toilet, we'll flush the toilet and we'll bring in all new people to do the job and get it done right. Because that's what matters to me and it always has mattered to me. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened and that aggravates the hell out of me. Because I've been talking about a lot of things for a lot of years. And here we are today, having this meeting.
Well, Steve, thank you for, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I just want to say, let me just finish real quick. I appreciate your, your position on this and not coming in defensive. We've seen that with other entities in town where it's not me, not me, not me. So thank you very much for at least taking, taking that posture. Yeah.
When did you acquire this project?
May of November one, May of twenty, May of twenty-two, sorry.
So, May of twenty-two?
Correct.
And there's a special permit in place on this project?
There was, yes.
And the special permit has a provision that says that between November and April, there should be a note clearing or you should, prior to that, have cleared and planted vegetation so there wouldn't be this problem?
The special permit says that you cannot clear after November one without hydroseeding after that.
Well, you have to hydroseed before November one.
Correct. And we read that as we could if stabilized. Now, there was a gap there of stabilization, I admit with that. But the way we've read that special permit is that it's not a time of year restriction, it's a hydroseed restriction.
That's your interpretation?
Correct.
And that's not what the English says in the special permit?
I beg to disagree, but that's for another, you know...
Even the construction...
I'm asking commonplace English. What, what does it say? Not engineering talk.
My name's Mark Halpin. I don't have a permit granted for me, but I'm happy to, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Yeah, sure. And this, this is not, not, so my name is Mark Halpin. I'm representing Navasun. And I think that's something that we've looked at the language. And, you know, just, just to be fair, I think, across the board, having seen dozens of these types of permits, it seems it's not a black and white time of year restriction, construction or clearing. It does not say you can't do any work between certain months of the year. It says if you do clearing, you have to do stabilization within a certain time period. And then there's a separate provision that says you can't do hydroseeding between certain periods of time. At the end of that last sentence, it says, or before May of the next year. So if you're doing work and you can't do hydroseeding before November, that provision actually allows it to go out to the next year. So there's different ways to read it. I respect your interpretation. I'm not trying to argue with you, sir. I'm just saying the language could be a lot clearer in that.
So the special permit, that's, is that our town? Was that a unit, was that one that we pulled from, that's ours, right?
It's issued by the planning board.
So we got to clean that up and make sure that is absolutely crystal clear? So that's when you'll have this conversation?
You and I can argue on that.
Rather than making interpretation, they could have asked for clarification.
Again, we get it. But, look, I think we're in a, this meeting has had a good tone. I don't think that's going to benefit anybody jousting back and forth. I think we made it clear what our expectations are. You know, this is part, you know, learning from what's going on, coming up with a plan moving forward. And, you know, I think we're, you know, hopefully we can get to a better, a better spot. There may be some, what shakes out, shakes out, right? It is what it is. You guys recognize it's a mess. You know, the town's going to be on this, you know, posthaste, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say one thing. Because I'm not, I don't want to get argumentative. We are where we are, right? I want you guys to know all this and I want the residents to know that we're taking this very seriously, right? There was a fine line during this of cease and desist orders saying we couldn't do anything on site. And we were trying to walk that line between that, between our federal permit and keeping water on site. And we've gotten there. And now that we have a little bit of a gap here in, in rain, we're really trying to escalate and get covered for the next wave. So I just want, we are taking, again, I just, people will get up and say that they're taking seriously. We're taking things seriously. I'll give you, I'll give everybody here my card. You know, please reach out, you know?
We've got Attorney Blake, Jeff, anything on your end? Again, we don't need to prolong this. I think we've accomplished what we want to accomplish for this meeting is that, one, we want the immediate butters to know that we're taking this very seriously. Our in-house staff, top of mind. And then also make sure that you guys know how we feel about it. Jeff, I don't know if there's anything needed to add or not, but...
No, there's nothing. I think that you guys have covered it very well. We can be perfectly honest with you.
Okay, great. Gentlemen, is there anything that we need to talk about at this point?
Just the importance of stormwater, that's all. I mean, we, we're required, the town, for an MS4 permit, right? And we do have to do an annual MS4 permit, which the discharges out today, Christiana River, are stormwater basins. And if we have people that come into town and we do, they do development, it impacts our MS4. We're looking to spend probably fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for our, our stormwater permit. It's going to do us and our taxpayers no damn well if we're going to be spending fifty, a hundred grand a year for MS4 to be in compliance with our stormwater to let developers pour into our stormwater and hurt us as a town. Because then we don't know where it's really coming from, right? And we're going to backtrack and figure where it's coming from. That's why, that's why I stress the importance of our stormwater bylaw. Our stormwater agent in the conservation is now responsible for stormwater and having that all peer reviewed. Because apparently, I don't, Mr. Hannan, can I ask the stormwater agent, did we have this project peer reviewed in the past?
So this project was actually waived by conservation. So I don't know if this went through the planning board when the planning board had stormwater authority, but they weren't enforcing the stormwater bylaw of the planning board.
That was not us, by the way.
I, I understand and this is the part of the internal investigation that'll uncover what I'm talking about. But I uncovered that we weren't enforcing our stormwater bylaw that we adopted attacked the townspeople in 2007, a few years back. And I know that that stormwater bylaw was never enforced by the simple fact that there's never been a stormwater permit issued. What does that tell you? That's where I'm at.
Yeah, right.
Members of the board, just one, I just want to say one thing. We have another, we have another system in town that's under construction. For everything we've heard, that one's going okay. We're taking our relationship with this town very seriously. We're a hanging base company. We have, you know, twenty-five projects in the state of Massachusetts. We're looking at this as, as a forty-year relationship with this town. So we want to get off on the right track. Unfortunately, it happened to happen. We're going to fix this. We, we are, I'm here today to say we're fixing it.
We appreciate it.
Ma'am?
I'm Devon DeRis from 616 Main Street. So my property fully abuts all of this catastrophe. But I have been here since day one, six years ago, when the first company, I had the original plans, came to get this approved. I've been at every meeting since then to voice my concern. And this has always been the concern of rainwater. We're on Perry Hill Road, the highest point. You cut all the trees, what's going to happen? And everybody at the time just seemed to have nothing in place. Don't worry about it. Or, you know, I say, well, I have a pond, I have this, I have farmland, it's going to be flooded. What's going to happen? And again, it just seemed like nothing, you know, planning board was like, well, if you don't like it by the land, you know, there's nothing we can do, you know, this and that. And now the catastrophes happened. My pond is full of silt, my river is full of silt, my whole field from being flooded is full of silt. And will this come back? Who's going to make sure that my pond life comes back? Because those are things I care about, you know? My land is what I care about. I could have solar panels. I have a big open field, fifteen acres. I choose not to because I want to farm the land. I hay my fields twice a year. Can I do that right now? I'm so terrified that tractor is never going to make it out there. I can't even walk out there right now. So this is affecting everything about my home and the home I've had for twenty-five years, my grandmother had before me, my great-grandparents had before me. We've been here forever. And, and not, and simple things like that bother me. But also that all the tree cutting, I have no privacy at all. So this company assured me that they would plant trees, they would do whatever. But now it's changed hands so many times, but yet you never meet again. It's like the company can change hands, but they never meet again with their butters. So promises made by this company are null and void. And I didn't even know that. I didn't even know a new company bought it until I saw the Navasun sign. And I pulled out my papers and said, when did all this happen? So things like that, a butter should still be, it should be known that this is changing hands, that we meet with the companies that we know. They took down every tree out there, but the trees are all against my stone wall, tipped over and on, half on my property and half on their property. That didn't get moved. But every other tree is gone. And now because all those trees are gone, the last storm that we had, other trees are blown over because there's nothing there to protect them. Who's going to take care of all that? It's just me on that property now. I don't have people I can hire to cut half a trees down and this and that. I don't have the money, the fun... down and this and that, I don't have the money, the funds, and I don't think I should have to do it.
You should.
So I really, I wanna know who's gonna follow through, who's gonna make sure this pond is clear and functioning as it should?
The gentleman behind you is waving his business card.
Okay, I mean, I'm serious, I mean, all of this looked at and taken care of, because I burnt out with problems.
On Zoom, so you have Dave Devignan?
Okay, I'm sorry, Dave Devignan from, and Mark Francois from the planning board, Dave Devignan from the board of health is here. Gentlemen, is there anything, Mark, anything you wanted to offer up?
I've been listening, and I think everything is, a lot has been mentioned, I agree with Mr. Gaspar that a lot of things in the past have slipped through, and there are a lot of new people, gonna make sure that that doesn't happen, that doesn't continue. Mr. Bobola, the planning board, the new stormwater agent, these things can't happen, and we, as a group, will make sure that this does not happen again.
All right, if there are no further questions, Gary, I'm sorry.
Gary Hathaway, I own the property that Rochelle's and Scuttle lets us, it's actually a question with the Navasun, because it looks like we've got two situations, one is immediate with the upcoming weather, and then we have the other one, which is, do they go back through the whole process for the long-term plan? So we have like a short-term, which is, let's not flood everything out, and I didn't even, thank you for the call, I didn't even know and consider that if it does, the ground does freeze, the water is, it was, because we did get some, we didn't get a ton, but we did get some, especially, you know, on the level, but if it does freeze, yeah, all back there, we'll all flood out. So, so I imagine you're working two plans, is that correct?
Yes, I can, I can...
Yeah, sure, please, please do.
Thank you.
Answer that, yes, this is a two-pronged approach, there's, there's the construction phase, what happens while it's open, it's kind of, it's been open, the can of worms is open, what are we gonna do to do, to get that, get to a point where we're stabilized, grass growing early, or some other means between now and spring. Then we're presenting a revised design from that small little basin, that's before conservation now, we're gonna submit it to planning through Mr. Bobola, we'll submit it to, one thing that we've laid out in multiple emails to the town, is tell us who to go to, and we're gonna go, we will, all, we'll go, so everyone's seeing the same plan, so everybody else is, can comment on the same plan. What we have asked is that we do this, you know, parallel, not in series, because we do have timelines with our interconnection, we do have timelines with our of-take agreements, and we would like to get it done so that it's all getting done at the same time, rather than subsequently going from conservation to soil, if, we're asking that, if that's, that's not possible, that's not possible, but we're asking that.
It is possible through the process that I described, right? When you first come in, and I know it wasn't you who bought the rights to it and all that stuff, but when you first come in, that's the bolt, and Mr. Francois, we had a meeting with Mr. Bobola, Mr. Kelly up in the planning board's office, with Mr. Hannan, and I mentioned that silly little piece of paper, right, because if that was in place, this would never happen, and what happens is, somebody goes in front of planning, you have your plans, we call them preliminary plans, and you say, this is what you want, yep, and this is what you're looking for approval, okay, and they, they look through it, and they can get preliminary approval, but then that same plan, not something else that's in a shoebox out in the trunk somewhere, goes to all the other departments along with that little piece of paper for comment?
Right.
Peer review for stormwater, because quite honestly, we don't have the professionals in staff, we never will, and that's why we have in our bylaws, peer review, right? And that, your plan goes to peer review, our engineers that work for the town, and they, and you actually pay for it, is that correct, Mr. Hannan? And they look at your engineers, and they depict the problems, right, and they say, nope, everything looks good, everything's gonna function properly, go, go for it, check, everything's signed off, it's really, it's simultaneously, I hate to say this this way, but I think it's simultaneously our fault and your fault, right? Because we didn't have our act together, okay? And if we would have had our act together, you wouldn't be at the phase that you're at right now, that would have been, there's big problems here, and let's address the elephant in the room, and then once you figure out what you actually need to do, it makes your job as a developer a lot easier to hit the site and go as you're saying. So that's, that's, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get.
The only other thing I'll say to that too, is just to put up what we do, you go to multiple different boards, and multiple different boards have their own review engineer, now you start having one review engineer who's gonna look at it differently than the other one, and they might argue, and it just gets, we wanna get this done, fixed as quickly as possible, because the quicker that we can get to an approval, and we're not saying we wanna streamline, we don't wanna push this through, we wanna be peer reviewed, we wanna go through conservation, we wanna go through stormwater, we wanna have everybody look at this, so at the end of the day, we know what we're building, and it is a two-pronged approach, it's construction, and that's what we fell down on, I totally agree with you, right? And then there's the long-term, and we're making changes on the long-term because of everything that's happened here, we're relooking at it, and that's where, that's where we are.
Thank you. In your, I know I can ask Mr. Hannan yourself, but in past experience that I've had with solar farms, to Ms. DeRis's point that all the tree clearing has been done, we always have berms with planting, so that, what she used to look at was trees, and now she's gonna look at solar panels, and quite honestly, they're ugly, and especially when you enjoyed woods, right? But it's somebody else's property, we can't tell people what to do with it, we could limit the tree cutting a little bit and be considerate, but not everybody has that same thing. In your plans, do you have berms with tree plantings?
We don't, but if the...
They call it a buffer?
If, we don't, but we, we make recommendations if the boards come back to us and ask for screening, and ask for certain things, we'll, we'll do it, yeah.
Wow, I've never, I've never seen something that's level like that and not have a buffer on a plan.
We also need to make sure of sureties.
So just to that point, I have, I have receipts from ConEd with deposits for the original sureties, that I can share, I can share the agreements that were signed, we're happy, if those numbers need to change and we need more money posted, we'll post it. But I have receipt, because there's been some, some discussion about no one can find the sureties, no one knows where they are, I have deposit slips, I have receipts that cash deposits were made by, by the previous developer before the building permit was issued, and if those numbers need to change, if we wanna get rid of the cash and put a surety bond in place, we do that all the time, and we're happy to work with the town, we just need to know how much the amount is, and we can talk about decomp, we can go through review, we can have third-party, that Mr. Hannan and Conservation Commissioner bring in, and all talk about how much that needs to be, and we'll post it, and we'll get rid of the cash, and we have no problem with it.
That's, that's another thing I think the town's gonna look at, I've had a conversation with our town administrator, Mr. Kelly, about the decommissioning bonds, because I know that certain treasurers that we've had said cash, but a bond's a lot cheaper, right, it's about 2% of the actual cash value, and looking at the sheet of paper that's been prepared for us, I just looked at it real quick, we haven't had time to look at it, but I can tell you right now, this town has done a missable job in our decommissioning amounts that we, we have on for a surety. These things are millions of dollars, and we basically get $50,000, how are you gonna decommission a solar field for $50,000?
We're not, we're not hiding behind it.
Twenty years later. Twenty, twenty, so we got, we have internally bigger problems that we're gonna fix moving forward, and that's part of the plan, I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Kelly about that, because...
And we have ways to do this, how we've done it in other towns, where, you know, we bring in third-party engineers who will recommend our decommissioning plan, how much we say it's gonna be, submit it, have a third-party review engineer okay it, and then we can give you a recommendation, we can give you our form of bond, you can review it, you can have town council review it, and say, yep, this is good, you know, with, with the standing of how everything goes, and when it can be called, and when it can't be called.
Sure, I'm pretty familiar with them, I've been studying them for some years, I'm actually the one that talked about it originally in 2012, how to protect the taxpayers, if somebody went rogue and left that behind, because I know solar panels are carcinogenic, so that was a very deep concern of mine, so that's where we started talking about decomp policies, but unfortunately, certain people haven't done their job, so, and, and I can tell you right now, looking at some of these numbers, they're grossly understated, because basically if your labor is a million dollars to put it up, then the labor to take it down is probably the same amount of money, right?
Not as much, it's, it's, it's a quarter of that, depends about how you, how you work it, yes, there's, there's taking it down, and then there's taking it apart, piece by piece, two totally different things, so.
I'd like to, I'd like to look at that.
Twenty years later.
All right, if there are no further questions or comments, thank you for your time, Gary, Deb.
Can we get your card?
Stay in touch.
Before you leave?
And, Pat, thank you, Joe, thank you, Mr. Bobola, thank you, Chief Richmond, Chief Farland, thank you for being here, again, we're not trying to yell fire in the theater, but we wanna make sure that, we wanna be prepared in the event something goes on, so. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.